To the Council of the Water, we will start our meetings with our prayer. At this time, I ask Councilmember Richard Jordan to lead us in prayer if you're able. Please stand.
Almighty God, we bless you for this rich privilege to gather today. We thank you for the representation of this great city. We thank you, Lord, as we come today with ask for your anointing to be upon us. We ask to be respectful, discreetful, and ask that you would help us to speak for the greater good of all Rocky Mount. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
If you just came in, there is an agenda over here to the left in the box. I think we have enough. If you didn't, please share it with your neighbor. We go by the item number, we're on item number four right now. Ask the caller, Paul Rowe, we're on action number three.
Councilmember Knight.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Watkins. Rogers.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
And Miller.
Here.
Now, we're on item number four. Approval of minutes of my regular scheduled meeting at the City Council, which was held October the fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. We've had minute actions to approve the minutes. If I don't hear anything, then I'm going to approve them as sent to you. Moving on to item number five, there's consideration of minutes and recommendations by the regular committee of the whole meeting. It was held on October the fourteenth. Some of these things were for information only. One was a comparative cost of public service analysis by Ken Hunter. It was a report with no action, very positive for the city of Rocky Mount. Tax amendment to reduce the number of Historic Preservation Commission members. Will Deaton did a report on that. No action was taken. Amendment to the Chapter Ten. This has to do with weeds, and Will Deaton again presented that. We didn't take any action at that moment. Amendment to Chapter Ten, again, public deuces. This was also by Will Deaton, and no action taken at that time. Five was boards and condition, and recommended for the following ordinance was George Dickens for the Workforce Housing Amendment Advisory Commission. Lorenzo Ellis, the Human Relations Commission, Ward Four, and Carlos Vila for the Human Relations Commission. And then, item six was a closed session for attorney-client privilege, the recommended actions to approve events and recommendations. So, move. Stand. Motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Blackwell. Any discussion? All in favor of saying hi? Hi. All others done? Item five is approved. Item six is a community update, and I'll turn it over to our City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I just have one reminder for the community, which is the start of our first Fridays series, beginning on Friday, November the first, at the Imperial Center from six until nine o'clock. Sunspots, I understand, is the band that will be playing. There will be arts and crafts, and lots of activities for family and friends, and I hope that you'll have an opportunity to come out. Also, this past weekend was the first food truck invasion in Rocky Mount. Although I wasn't present, I heard that it was very well attended. People had a great time. When they said invasion, I almost thought about spaceships, but I understand there was a variety of foods and activities. The event center was open. More than six hundred kids had an opportunity to go in there and enjoy the free activities that were planned for them. So, lots of exciting things are happening still in the city.
Thank you. Going to move on to item seven now. This is a presentation of recognition. We had someone that recommended, and I certainly approved it, was a recognition of Spade trophies. I'm going to ask Roscoe Spade to come up in a minute. He's been providing thirty-seven years of continuous entrance service to the city of Rocky Mount, and we want to recognize him for that. So, Roscoe, I'm going to ask you to come up, let me present this to you, and recognize you for your use of service. Ladies and gentlemen, Roscoe, he has a Spade trophy shot. So, why have you got black ass over here, and you've got something? You probably got it from Roscoe's shot. So, I just want to present that to you, and then after, sir. This time, we're going to move on to item eight, which is petitions to be received in the public. I will read the statement that I normally read. It is the enforcement of the meeting for you to address the council for public comment. We do thank you for coming. If you'd like to address the council, you should have signed one of these sheets right here, and if you didn't, the officer will ring you one. Any comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not to any individual council members or city staff. It is your opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. In most cases, the council will not respond to public comments tonight, but may refer the matter to the city manager or staff. We ask you to come up to the podium, speak in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. And personal attacks, which have the potential to disrupt the meeting, are not tolerated. We will give you three minutes and give you a heads-up at about two and a half minutes. So, and I don't think there's any public hearings on here tonight. So, first one I'd like to call up is Gloria Davis. After Miss Davis will be Susan Perry Cole, and then Dr. Cooley.
Praise to the Rocky Mount City Council. Thank you all for doing such a great job. It would really be great. My name is Gloria Dix, and I'm over eighteen to seventeen in Aridin, and I'm here to recommend and show my support for the adoption of the Atlantic Arlington Corridor Main Study to the City Council for two qualifying points, and they are not inclusive points. I want to thank the way that this was handled, because it gave the stakeholders, especially the residents of the study area, to give their opinions and express their individual experiences and the desires that they have related to this study area, and what it would be moving forth in the future for the city of Rocky Mount. Also, this draft encouraged new multifamily developments to provide allotment of affordable housing units. The draft study proposes incentives for private developers, such as density houses, bonuses, expedited permitting processes, and conditional use zoning or other similar strategies. Those are the only two points I'm just going to share with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council, before I give my remarks, I want to say I was at the food truck invasion this weekend, had a ball. We need more of it, the tone, and the whole activity was really a fun day for the family. So, good afternoon to each of you. My name is Susan Perry Cole. I'm a resident who has lived for thirty-five years in one of the neighborhoods located within the boundaries of the land use study area, located on the eastern half of downtown Rocky Mount. I'm speaking in support of the City Council's adoption of the draft land use study, which is listed on your agenda for today. As stated in the draft study, Rocky Mount's twenty-eighteen, twenty-twenty-one consolidated plan reported that within the city, thirty-seven point five percent of the households are cost burdened. That means they are paying more than thirty percent of their gross monthly income for housing. Based on these statistics, we can safely conclude that the city is in the midst of a serious housing affordability crisis that is severely impacting longtime, lower-income citizens residing in the land use study area. Rocky Mount is not alone in confronting the challenges associated with sufficient access to affordable or workforce housing units within its city limits. Coincidentally, and I don't know if you saw it, yesterday on the Raleigh-based News and Observer, a major editorial was featured that was entitled "Look Ahead for Affordable Housing." This editorial mentioned that creation of more affordable housing was the top issue during the recent twenty-nineteen Raleigh City Council elections. The editorial also pointed out that Durham, faced with gentrification as its downtown booms, will vote on a ninety-five million dollar affordable housing bond on November the fifth. So, we in Rocky Mount want to be proactive and prepared as the challenges and transformations continue to occur in and around our downtown neighborhoods. We also recognize, as is documented in the study, right now, our downtown adjacent neighborhoods have experienced extended periods of economic and physical decline, resulting in extensive vacant and abandoned properties and other signs of instability and disinvestment. However, this draft study marks a turning point.
I've got about thirty seconds.
A turning point provides hope and encouragement to the longtime residents of these dilapidated neighborhoods, and our period of being ignored and suffering in silence is coming to an end. Thank you for supporting the study.
Thank you. Dr. Cooley, and then after that, Cooper Blackwell.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers of the public. My name is Dr. Cooley, and I am here today with other community members to urge City Council to adopt the Arlington-Atlantic Corridor Land Use Study and move ahead with it. Many members of the affected communities have spent countless hours with city planners to craft this final piece of the plan that is now presented to you. In particular, I had been involved in some of the community discussions with members of the city's developmental service, Mr. Joseph Bochuk and Mr. Will Deaton, under the supervision of the Assistant City Manager, Ms. Natasha Hampton, who succeeded Ms. Lendy Falcone. I credit them for listening with patience and respect to community suggestions. This land use study has the unique quality of our direct input on how we want to see our communities developed, as the city moves forward in redevelopment and revitalization. All the features that you see before you, including preservation of historic African-American landmarks, the recommendation of form-based structures, are the results of these many hours of deliberations. One sticking point, though, brought up countless times at candidate's forums, is the question of affordable housing and gentrification. It is very understandable that poor communities do not want to be ejected out of their homes, where many generations have decided. Concerns of the elderly who lived on fixed incomes and the disabled must also be taken into account. The proposed study has suggestions of mitigation of such defects. It includes multifamily developments to provide an allotment of affordable housing units, incentives for developers like density bonuses, expedited permitting processes, and conditional use zoning. City Council has the responsibility, in every way possible, to ensure our communities are safe from forced displacement under the phony disguise of increased value to the property, thus pricing out many permanent residents. Affordability is a matter of continuing to live with dignity for many folks. This study has included some ways on how we can do that. I also have a special concern on making sure that the new housing units that will be built on environmentally safe foundations, as Ashcombe site of Rocky Mount seem to have a disproportionately larger numbers of currently raided, inactive groundfills. This study is a glimmer of light at the end of long tunnel. We want you to give your blessings and proceed to act on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Cooper Blackwell, and then Matthew Haywood, then after that, Johnny Cunningham.
Good afternoon. I'm Cooper Blackwell, South Rocky Mount community resident. Where a person lives helps determine their physical and psychological health. Low-income residents concentrated and segregated, opportunity to deprive communities, lack access to steady employment, essential services, and good schools. This geographic isolation from opportunity creates artificial barriers for improvement for these residents and significantly diminishes their quality of life. We must understand that these issues overlap, and the system, small deposits of oppression, creates large calluses to our systemic barriers. The solution is to push community-centered health equity and highlight racial segregation as a non-medical driver of poor health outcomes. The Crossroad to Prosperity Report released in two thousand fourteen identified that racial segregation is an issue in Rocky Mount, and it's tied to investment based on neighborhoods. Change generates fear amongst those who have been historically entitled to exclusive social benefits and business. This fear has caused a faction of white supremacists in our region to revolt against change agents like myself and many black community leaders as we work on community-centered health. They feed on our region, state, and nation's long history of racial mistrust, and have been embedded in social media, using race and sharpen rhetoric of race as their primary issue or weapon. This faction has resurrected post-Civil War, Reconstruction-era specters of incompetent and unethical black politicians and leaders, in aims of instigating strife between white citizens and black officials, as well as black candidates in the electorate. This faction of organized white opposition in Rocky Mount leads public attacks against key organizations and individuals advocating for community, economic, and social justice, and they have created a well-funded flurry of media attacking people and progressive issues. Black elected officials tend to affair and affordable housing, as well as progressive plans of minority and women business development, downtown redevelopment, and anti-gentrification efforts have all come under siege. This concentrated effort is to slow down and halt economic development in under-resourced areas, and it's been backed by local media outlets, by like WIG TV, the Rocky Mount Telegraph, and which is an affiliate of a Florida-based conservative newspaper chain, and CBS Seventeen, which have been publishing and discussing articles and OS like, quote, "Your race card is declined," quote, "Left-wingers are detached from reality," quote, "Who are the real races?" We must end this narrative, push for white supremacists, and fight in crime news, love Rocky Mount, and Rocky Mount concern citizens, and start uniting, not for political causes or for food, but for people and community-centered health. Thank you.
Matthew Haywood, and then Johnny Cunningham, and then after that, Amelia Stanson.
I'd like to say good afternoon to our mayor, our council.
Intention number one, yeah.
My name is Matthew Haywood. I'm a twenty-five-year veteran of Rocky Mount and the system of Rocky Mount, and my concern is, when I first moved to Rocky Mount, as I was coming into town, I saw this sign that said, "Rocky, Welcome to Rocky Mount, City on the Rise." I'm still waiting on that rise. But the problem with this ride is, it can't be perpetuated until we make this a safe place in order to live. I don't fault the Commissions for nothing, because these guys have worked very hard in times that I've known them. We need to formulate a plan among our commissions to go into their neighborhoods and identify crime and trouble points, and then come back and do like a survey to identify those that can actually help to change these issues, whether they complain or get up and do something. We all have the right to vote. Take advantage of it. We all have rights to be protected by our police department. Take advantage of it. But these people need cooperation. They cannot do it all night, and everybody can't be in the same place at the same time, but we can help each other. See, these people have families to go home to themselves. They have personal issues in their lives. Do something about your own personal issues. Speak out. You can't do nothing but mumble, mumble. No, everybody's not articulate. Everybody don't know everything. We don't all have all the education or whereabouts about not just Rocky Mount, but the world period. But if you do know, be known to others. You can't keep giving a man the fish so he'll eat one day. Give him a fishing pole and some string, and then teach him how to catch his own fish. And that's how we need to start addressing in our city. Let's work together. I think that our commission to some of our that know for years and years, or doing X much, it just hurts me to see the things that are said about some of the things that they're accused of. But this is who we have. Let's stand behind it, and let's protect our communities. Thank you very much.
Johnny Cunningham, and then Amelia Stanson.
Johnny Cunningham, five forty-six, Maryville Street. It is with extreme pleasure. I am honored for staying here today. It's been a long, long journey. I've been on both sides. Done some things, seen some things, said some things, but today, I stand here to get the unity. A whole lot of you out here know me. You get on that side. This is one thing that I admire, and why I'm standing here today, Mr. Blackwell, Mr. Knight, Mr. Jordan, Mr. Danson, and several others. Thirty years, I stood before this council, echoed and echoed time and time again of black politics, and you heard me. I've said some things, some very harsh things, in the depth of war, because that's what it was. There was a war brewing in our neighborhoods, but not one time did you gentlemen retaliate with negative name-calling, back-biting, backstabbing, but you humbled yourselves. And that's why you sit here on this council today representing us, because God lifted you up, because you humbled yourself. I admire that about you. It taught me. I stand here today, people that's behind me that see me, the word today is humble, and God will lift all of us up. We're seeking unity, and we all must. Like you gentlemen did, demonstrated to me, and I know I can be a mean someone if I want to be, and I was mean, said some very mean things, but unity begins with homeness. I want to congratulate you. When I ride around there, Rocky Mount, I say, you know what? It was all worth it. I stood, I stood, I said, you know what? I'm going to sound like a fool, I'm going to look like a fool, I'm going to be called a fool, but I said, you know what? I'm going to do it until I'm heard, and you heard me. When you ride around Rocky Mount there, Nash County, and East County, even where I live, some people call it the hoodoo, but that's all right. It's mine. Work and unity and construction and development is all over the city. All we have to do is take the blinders off, that thing, that first step, from seeing what others are doing for our city. Thank you. Keep up the good work, and I support you one hundred percent.
Good evening. My name is Camille Stanson, the second everybody to me on the paper outside. I've worked in Rocky Mount for the past thirty-three years, in January, or late thirty-three years. I have much family and friends here and enemies, so I support and represent everybody. Even if they don't like me, they still benefit from the good things, so it don't matter. I want to congratulate my friend, Mr. Roscoe Spade. I always purchase trophies from him for my church. I host the mainstay, chair of the mainstay, and I pay for the trophies out of pocket. So, and also, just like I'm standing here today, video out of pocket, so it's nothing for me to gain. I really stood because I subscribe to the Rocky Mount Telegram, and like tomorrow, if my daddy sees me in the paper, he's going to say, boy, won't you leave them folk alone? But I ain't harming nobody. I'm representing folk, whether they like it or not. So, I'm here, and I have been here like over thirty-three years. I have been advocating, matter of fact, I was here before any of you was on the board. I remember when Mr. Blackwell was appointed to feel Mr. Donald Armstrong's seat. I've been here for years and was attending the Rocky Mount Human Relations Commission, so I also want to appreciate getting the opportunity to serve on that, until I'm removed to be given a replacement. So, I want, again, thank you for that. But like I said, I hope tomorrow my daddy will read about this in the newspaper, where it won't be a negative. Because sometimes I don't even want to go home where he don't live. But like I said, I subscribe to the newspaper, he don't mind, and I send the paper to his house, so when they don't send it, and he don't tell me about it, the other week, when they was talking about me in the paper, he didn't get the paper. I said, oh, Lord, I was scared he'd go up to his house, but anyway, I just want to thank you all, and y'all keep up the good work, and just hold your hands up high, and if you like me, constructive criticism, make me do better, that's where I am today. So, I appreciate you all.
Appreciate you, man. Thank you. Rose Hunter, and then Natalie Best. Is Rose Hunter here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And we're going to cut it off, so if nobody else is going to, I mean, we're good at the end of this, so go ahead.
Greetings to all you today, the council, City Manager, and Mayor. I'm Rose Hunter. I live fifteen thirty-one Springfield Road, near Rocky Mount, and then sometimes on Atlantic Avenue, six oh five, six oh nine, oh oh two Alamo Avenue. First of all, I just want to say, so good to hear the contribution today, because I'm not always here, but I can read about what's going on here at the council, and not to see so much animosity, because it just needs to wait to solve, and the energy level is absorbed with that kind of talk. So, I also want to congratulate Mr. Spade. Mr. Spade, I know, owe you some money, I'd be down if you would speak for me. And, you know, always reflecting on the council, when we're not here, it doesn't mean that we're not thinking about you, and I often think, wow, that you go through a lot, and all of us have these situations in life where we've had these lengths and hours come at us, and to have, you know, consideration for others going through the same thing is what I struggle with a lot. And then also thought about, you know, what a blessing it was that Ruben came to Rocky Mount. Just think we'd be without him and all that he's done, you know, for our city, and for our city, and Dr. Sullivan would be so proud about his, the thing that he birthed back in nineteen, late nineteen fifties, early sixties, I can't remember, but I do remember Dr. Sullivan. But not to digress, but I do want to say that my spin is a little different. I'm talking about being proactive. I'm working as if he's already passed this land use study. You know, we've been working diligently for the last four or five years, anticipation for this would come to Rocky Mount sooner or later. So, having attended Booker Washington High School, and, you know, had been experienced along the Atlantic Avenue corridor with classmates, I've been speaking with them, and they've turned to Rocky Mount, and talking about what may happen here in Rocky Mount, and how they can get involved by cleaning up their property, repairing, making affordable people who live in the community who may want to occupy that property, and wanting to look good along the corridor.
I've got thirty seconds.
All right. So, right now, as I've said, that we're working on the foreproffers along the corridor, and I want to thank the city for all of your help, Joseph Bochuk in particular. We're working with Senator Danny Davis's office now, putting the property on the national list of these are places, the Atlantic Avenue Buffalo Home. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie Best, and then Alain Williams, and then the last two.
Good afternoon. My name is Natalie Best, and I reside at one ninety-six East Thomas Street in the beautiful city of Rocky Mount. I also own a business, I'm the owner of the law firm, Best Lawrence Law, at one eighty-eight East Thomas Street. And not by coincidence, both of those entities are on East Thomas Street, about one block from Atlantic Avenue, and I rise very proud of the Redevelopment Commission and in support of the Arlington-Atlantic Study. I rise in commemoration of those who have gone on before us. A black developer by the name of Franklin Davis, who designed many of the homes in that community, and I.D. Hargit, a Presbyterian minister, who was principal of the Logan School, which is School, which is also in that community, and many other houses and historic properties that we would like for all of our children, of all races, creeds, and colors, to be able to know about the rich history of that community, once known as the neighborhood in Arlington and Logan Place. And this is a very positive step in the study that has been done and the painstaking efforts of the city, as well as community residents who are interested in continuing to make this truly a city on the rise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Elaine Williams, and all of y'all looks good up there, so glad all of you are on the wheel. I want to share something I heard on TV this morning. I ended up seeing Ms. Jean on the kitchen at Bible study today, and I shared with her that I listened to her this morning as she talked, she was on TV, and I wanted to share with the community because she shared some stuff that was very positive. The airwaves was positive this morning, and I want to put that positive spirit out here. Some of the things she said was that this city of Rocky Mountain is headed in the right direction. And she said, if you want your city to continue that way, vote for the person that is gonna continue to carry it in the right direction. And I thought that was very empowering. The host this morning on that show was both positive this morning. The things that they shared was all positive, and I just, it just dawned with me that I wish I could say something to her, and then I went to Bible study, and there she was. So I had to give her a hug and say, thank you for sharing that positive information, because there are some ads identity saying Rocky Mountain is going in a different direction. And she say, no, it's not. It's going in the right direction. So I need you as citizens to vote for whoever is gonna continue to carry it in the right direction. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
That's the end of our petition to be received from the Republican, number eight. We're gonna move on to our agenda items now. The first is a consent agenda. This is a Schedule A and Schedule B of taxes. Consider, and B is a consideration of adoption of a fiscal year 2019, '20 budget ordinance amended. It's appropriating grant funds from the Z. Smith Reynolds Foundation for the Blacklight Project. Recommended actions to approve the consent agenda inclusive of the approval of the tax releases and option of ordinance.
Go ahead. Second?
Motion by Councilmember Knight, second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item nine is approved. Item 10 is the consideration of amendments and recommendations from our regular Schedule Planning Board meeting, which was held on October 15, 2019. Overview of recommendations by the Director of Developmental Services or his designate D. Is there anything that we need to go over, Joseph, or anybody, in terms of these items? Will? No? Okay. One was to adopt and approve the Atlantic Arlington Corridor Land Use Study. Two was to amend the Together Tomorrow Tier One Smart Growth Comprehensive Plan to add the Atlantic Arlington Corridor Land Use Study as an appendix. And the recommended actions to, one, approve the receipt of minutes, two, approve and adopt the land use study, and three, amend the Together Tomorrow Tier One Smart Growth Comprehensive Plan.
Some move. Second?
Motion by Councilmember Blackwell, second by Councilmember Joyner. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item 10 is approved. Item 11 is a notification of award of the 2019 Bulletproof Vest Grant. There was a local match for funding for 60 new bulletproof vests. Recommended actions to acknowledge and approve the acceptance of the grant, authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute any required documentation, approve the local match, and three, adopt the project ordinance.
Some move.
Was that Councilmember Miller and Councilmember Knight? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item 11 is approved. Item 12 is a consideration of the following grant applications. A is a grant application to the Upper Coastal Plain Agency on Aging. This is for fiscal year 2019, '20. It's for the Senior Center of General Purpose Funding. There is a local match there, and it's towards the purchase of new equipment, fitness bikes, rowing machines. B is a consideration of a grant application to the Rocky Mountain Community Foundation for funds to assist with costs associated with Battle Park Master Plan. That was $25,000 with no local match required. The recommended action is to approve the grant applications and authorize admission by the staff, and two, authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the required documentations and certifications, including subsequent grant agreements.
Some move. Second?
Motion by Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Joyner. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item 12 is approved. Item 13 is a consideration of a resolution intent. This is to lease or rent 572 square feet of space in the Douglas Block Building at 209 Northeast Main. This is in the historic Douglas Block. It's a two-year lease at 500 per month with option of one three-year extension, and this is upon at least a 90 days written notice. Recommended action is to adopt the resolution. It does authorize the city clerk to advertise notice of intent to lease or rent the property.
Go ahead. Second?
Motion by Councilmember Knight, second by Councilmember Joyner. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item 13 is approved. Item 14 is a consideration of an ordinance amended in Chapter 14 of the City Code. It's an update based on recently adopted legislation. The recommended action is to adopt the ordinance.
Some move. Second?
Motion by Councilmember Blackwell, second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item 14 is approved. Item 15 is a consideration for some equipment. One is for some bids for 27-inch breach, beach branch outfall phase one. This is awarded to A.M. Minor Easting in the amount of almost $2.4 million. It does include some contingencies. An exercise, the city's option within the bid document to extend 1,500 lean air feet, and two, a budget ordinance amendment appropriating an additional $377,000 sewer fund to cover project expenses. Recommended actions to award the bid as recommended, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the bid contract on behalf of the city, and two, adopt the budget ordinance.
Second?
A motion by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilmember Miller. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item 15 is approved. Item 16 is a consideration of a bid for a park spraying at 28 city parks. It's an award to Nature Kiln, total of $196,000. This is for three years, not to exceed $63,600 in the first year, $65,400 in the third, and $67,200 in the third year. And it is an option to renew for two additional one-year terms. The recommended action is to award the bid as recommended and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the bid contract on behalf of the city.
Before we go to that, I do have some questions. I did read the item in some detail, and I did not find any indication of what chemicals are to be sprayed or applied to the parks. Yes, I'll ask Parks and Recreation Director Elgin, do you know exactly what types of chemicals will be used?
I don't have the list. I'm sorry.
Yeah, come up here.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Manager, rest of the council. Excuse me, I don't have the list with me, but I can provide a list to you by the later date. We did review everything, and it's nothing that's gonna be harmful to the nature, nothing that's gonna be harmful to water. That's one of the specifications that we had initially.
I guess this would continue the kinds of spraying that's been done in our parks in recent years.
Absolutely.
Which includes the application of Roundup.
Yes, well, I don't know about Roundup. This is just for the baseball fields and the other fields that were mutated in the application, but I don't think that Roundup would actually be used.
Well, I believe that was used in Battle Park. That's somewhat causes my concern that we would not continue that.
Yeah, this was not, this was not the same type of stuff that would be going in Battle Park. This is just for the baseball field and not athletic fields.
So like fire ant bids, maybe?
Yes, anything that's gonna prevent weeds. When we, something we use at Battle Park is approved by Dena, and that's because it's near water. The other parks are just around athletic fields, so it's a different type of chemical.
Okay, I think the weeds and the ant control would be two different items, but I get your point.
Yeah, the list, the actual chemicals that we will use, I can provide that to all Councilmembers.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. I remember that subject coming up about certain chemical that was sprayed in Battle Park that was in partnership with cattle broadcasting, is that correct?
I think Parks and Recreation did it because some citizens were inquiring about it.
I believe, I think it was, I forgot her name, that used to live, Dr., I forgot her name, that used to live at the mill, but she had some complaint about some chemicals that was recommended or being, somehow, it was cattle broadcasting that was providing or knew about it, I'm not sure. So I just wanted to make sure that we're clear about what we're doing and what we're spraying.
Okay, so we will certainly provide a report on that and give more specific information about the spraying, when it occurs, and what we're using.
I think several councilmembers got sent it, well, if y'all remember that.
But all these are approved by Dena?
Yes, anytime we spray, especially in the nature parks, like Battle Park, for example, I don't know what occurred prior to we get here, but since I've been here, we've actually had state reps approve what we use prior to this one.
Okay. I don't think I have a motion on this yet. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Was that Councilmember Blackwell, second by Councilmember Knight? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's the end of our regular council meeting, but we do have a report by our council, Jeff Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reporting on a claim that has been concluded. This is a Todd River Transit Claim, comes out of an accident in February of this year. The driver ran into a light pole and did quite a bit of damage in the shopping center, the Rosa Shopping Center, it's still Rosa's, I think it's Edgewood Shopping Center, is now located on Fairview Road. Said he was blinded by the sun, which is possible, about time of year in February, it's early in the morning. He was also known to have been eating a biscuit, so he got distracted. But anyway, the council agrees to approve that, and we're announcing the conclusion of the claim. Thank you.
Any questions for the council?
No.
In business, come to the council. If not, then we adjourn, and thank you for being here.